Good evening, this is a meeting of the San Andres Valley Union High School District Board of Education. It's March 4th, 2020, and the time is 5:30. The minute should reflect that all board members are present.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, item four, do I have a motion to approve the agenda? So, we have a motion, in a second, we have a discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Sure votes aye, motion carries five zero. Superintendent Reports and Presentations.
Certainly, would like to begin with our student representative fresh off of track practice, Ms. Ellers.
Hi, everybody, I know it's been a little while since I've seen you, I'm sorry, it was their last meeting, I was in Sacramento, UCU government, we were working on focusing on bills and passing through legislation, and in San Andres Valley, our delegation bill actually went all the way through the House and the Senate about signed. So that was really exciting, it was, thank you, it was a big achievement, it was really fun, I got to work with a bunch of different kids, meet a lot of new people, learn a bunch of different speaking techniques. In addition, Drake Clark, one of our students, he's a senior, he received a $32,000 scholarship for welding. And then Brian Painter and Justin Fairfield, they have both received statewide positions for FFA. For sports, Richard Sandoval, it's his third year in CIF, second overall, he weighs in at 120 pounds. For girls water polo, they placed fifth in all-chalet league, girls basketball fourth, boys soccer was second, girls soccer was fourth, wrestling was second, and boys basketball was sixth. So we've had a pretty good season, everybody's picking up the new spring season, I decided to also be joining track last week, so I will probably see all the new track stuff, so that's been really fun, it's really cool to see all the new kids coming out and everyone getting ready to try, getting ready for summer and spring and college acceptance, and I'll have to leave after this, we do have questions for me. Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
So next up, I want to take an opportunity for the board and the public as well, to talk about how we are addressing the coronavirus, obviously at the forefront of everybody's minds, and so just to share a little bit about what we're doing and where we're going to be going with this, it's going to be a very dynamic situation, and we could wind up in a very different spot three to four weeks or so from now. So, a couple of updates for you, as of March 3rd yesterday, per Santa Barbara County Public Health press release, there are no coronavirus cases in Santa Barbara County, and the risk remains low at this time, it's as of yesterday. Santa Barbara County school districts have asked Santa Barbara County Public Health to provide weekly updates for school districts, and we will be posting these on the district website to keep the public informed, but also encourage the public to check out the Santa Barbara County Public Health website as well, some great information on there that's very current. Measures that we're taking on campus that we want everybody to be aware of, hand sanitizer dispensers are placed in all classrooms, offices, and other high-traffic areas, we are mapping the campus to ensure that all of this is in place, that they're filled and functioning, disinfectant wipes are available to teachers by request in classrooms, we've had a significant number of staff take us up on that. Custodial measures being taken include daily checks to ensure dispensers are full and daily sanitizing of high-touch areas on campus such as the backs of chairs, keyboards, desktops and doorknobs are taking place as well, so there's a daily sanitizing, and some teachers are going the extra mile too, to engage in some cleanup sanitizing in between classes. Also, we've contacted our bus transportation provider, Student Transportation of America, STA, to inquire and request a twice-daily wiping down of high-touch areas on the buses as well that transport our students, okay? In addition to that, all staff have been asked to report to the school nurse any students that present flu-like symptoms. If the nurse determines via CDC standards checklist that a student needs to be sent home, we have designated a sick room as a waiting area until a parent or guardian arrives. Also, want to remind the public that public health officials continue to remind us to stay vigilant and continue to practice routine hygiene methods to prevent the spread of any virus, and these aren't new news to us, but it bears repeating, frequent hand washing with soap and water, avoid touching eyes, nose, or mouth with unwashed hands, cover your mouth when you sneeze or cough into your arm or tissue, discard the tissue if you use it, stay home if you are sick, if you need to, we have electronic options for students to submit assignments and communicate electronically with staff via CAMHS, which is our learning management system. If any of the members of the public have any other questions about what we are doing or wanting more information, please contact our school nurse, Miranda Burford, for more information. Any questions from the board? Ms. Burden?
I believe, just before I left home, I saw that because there has been one death in California, that the governor has created a state of emergency for the state, will that have any impact?
So, we will stay in touch with Santa Barbara County Public Health, so the trickle-down is CDC, State of California, and then counties, and so they are providing updates as needed to us, and so if that impacts anything we need to be doing here, like I said, it's going to be fairly dynamic for the next three or four weeks, maybe even beyond that, and so we'll be staying in touch, so if those things are declared, when that does happen, are there adjustments that we need to be making?
I think I saw it, something came up, but I didn't.
Okay, I did not see that. Any questions from the public, I know this is kind of a random, any questions from the public about what we're doing, since this is such an important topic for all of us?
I came because I was actually really disappointed about how the school managed it, knowing that we have kids going through Europe and specifically Milan, which is the second highest infectious city in the entire world, and we're led to integrate, and there were no notices to the rest of the public, I found it really negligent, and when I called and tried to get in touch with the school, I got in touch with the nurse, who said I'm calling the CDC, but at that point, the kids had already been integrated back into the system, it was kind of, I talked to Mark about it, that said it felt like a daily eight-dollar chore, and I just felt like the school was not proactive, and I didn't want to, you know, the, the point was made up that, you know, we didn't want to make any of these kids to be singled out, but at the expense of exposing an entire population of the school, and I just felt like I had to come and say it, I really felt like it was a daily eight-dollar chore once the notice came out.
Thank you, I'm sorry, what's your name?
My name's Karen.
Did you send an email as well?
I left a message for you, I didn't, I tried to send an email, but all the emails kept getting shot back saying that the site was down.
If you need to contact me, please, or if you'd like to follow up with the other issue, thank you.
There was nothing that the school district was doing at that point in time, which was below what the recommendations were by the CDC and the California Department, but we feel that we should have been more aggressive, that's a matter of opinion, but please don't make the suggestion that the district somehow is negligent in the practice that they were enforcing.
Yeah, we did have people say, hey, why aren't you quarantining, that was not our call, there were no travel restrictions at the time they went, but we are trying to be sensitive to exactly what you're saying, and Dr. Big is correct, we haven't done anything outside of CDC guidelines, but.
No, and I appreciate all the measures that have been made since then to keep our kids aware and whatnot, I just felt like, based on where they had been, and that I wish I had known that I had the option of maybe just being informed, that was my thing, saying it's just information that, hey, we've had kids who've traveled there, we've had families who've traveled there, would have been, I felt like, a nice gesture for the entire population to know, make decisions for themselves.
Great, thank you very much, one more in the back, yes.
I was wondering, it sounds like the nurse has a checklist of symptoms?
Correct.
Is there also a testing kit, like we have those?
So testing kits, that's really up, we found this out today, that's up to the county, and how many kids are actually available, we do not know that number, obviously they were in very high demand, so where they are with that, and they actually have raised a fairly high standard right now for testing, and it's been more of a dynamic situation, but I don't have a specific answer for you, that'd be a great question for Santa Barbara County Public Health. Yeah, okay, thank you all very much. I do, I do have a construction update for you, yes, we won't make this one very long. Couple of updates for you, we had stated before that there was a possibility to, we might be behind on our timeline, to not be substantially complete by the end of March, but I am pleased to announce that we are back on schedule, last of the concrete was poured last week, there will be obviously lots of things to do after we are substantially complete, punch list items, furniture, equipment, those kinds of things, but it's been really something to watch that come together, lots of comments and input from students about that space being open, and we're excited to share that with everybody, but I think it's going to be a substantial improvement for our students and staff and the campus environment, so. Some of you may be aware, certainly the board is, that we detected a natural gas leak yesterday, wound up doing some searching in-house, and then wound up contacting the gas company, a section of pipe that was not replaced under Major K was found to be faulty, and so we shut down yesterday, we're hoping to have repairs finished by tomorrow, but it's been a bit brisk this morning, and will be tomorrow as well, because it's the natural gas that powers our plant for heating, so we are getting, getting that repaired, and then we'll be examining the rest of the line, again, the only section we didn't replace, which tested fine two years ago, we'll be continuing to look into that and get repairs made as soon as we can. Yes?
Where was that location?
Actually, heading from right at the south end of industrial arts, going all the way out to the main feed from the gas company out of Refugio, on the east side of campus.
Sounds like a pretty old stuff.
Yeah, and it goes under a lot of, a lot of their concrete, that kind of thing, so we'll probably wind up doing some horizontal pouring. Okay, also, I'll be bringing to the board a final approval needed to proceed with our baseball bleacher project, we do have, we went through a bidding process, accepted bids, open bids, we have a little bidder, and we'll be submitting for a construction start the first day of summer, this has been a long time coming, and we're happy to be at that place, we'll be sharing that with you at the next board meeting. Also proceeding with estimates, we'll have a bidding process in regards to our football field turf, which is in desperate need of replacement as well, and we are hopefully on a timeline to get that done, again, starting in the first day of summer, and be done at the latest by mid-July, that's our hope, before the football season gets underway and all of that.
So, nowhere from the class action lawsuit?
No, that's still deep in the process, and it could be multiple years before we get a final result from that, okay?
May I ask one question?
Certainly.
Will we be working on scheduling, because we have so many people from out of the area coming in using our football field, it puts a, you know, undue strain on it, I think, will we be reevaluating, I mean, certainly for everybody local, but maybe not teams from way outside our area?
We will, we have a new facility use website that does a much better job of gathering data, we are six months in with that, we're actually going to be taking a look at all that data to talk about use, who's using and how much use does it give, is it local, is it from out of the area, and having a conversation about that as well.
Thank you.
We certainly want to be available to local organizations, but need to take a look at some of the outside organizations outside of the valley. Also, Proposition 51, some good news, we've been looking, working for the last two years to achieve a match and seek all of our eligibility for Proposition 51, we have a total eligibility of $8.3 million, pleased to announce that it looks like next year we have $7 million coming to us, we have another 1.3 that was contingent on the success of Proposition 13, yesterday was Super Tuesday, that's not looking like that will be successful, it still keeps us in the queue if there's another one for somewhere down the road, but at this time, $7 million for next year, the next project on the list is the locker rooms, and so we've already started that process, and a backwards mapping for making that impact as minimal as possible, but it will take a year to make that process happen, just for construction, so that process has begun as well, so we're looking forward to that.
Mr. Corey, since we likely have people that have not been at previous board meetings, I think it's important, would you please clarify that the matching funds that we may potentially get next year are legally not allowed to be commingled with any funds that would pay for staff salary and hiring of new faculty?
It is earmarked for construction, that is correct.
I didn't hear that, can you say it louder?
Earmarked for construction.
I still didn't hear you.
Yes, earmarked for construction, that is correct, we'll put it to very good use, so thank you, that's an important clarification, so, but that's really good news, we've been working on it for a long time, and we'll have, so we took the 14.7 that was Major K, we're able to leverage that for another $7 million for next year, which is, which is a good, very good thing.
Quick question, if I may please, obviously the locker rooms are in dire need of renovation, will any, there be any money left for the little theater, and do you do any of that?
Yes, so the little theater, it's a good question, the little theater is going to be an interesting kettle of fish, if you will, because there are so many ADA compliance things that need to be brought up to code in there, that makes that a very expensive project, but it's still on the list for us to look at, parking lots are also on there as well, but that little theater is going to require a substantial, because if we touch any facet of that, all the triggers are pulled for all of that ADA compliance, and that will be significant, and that's very expensive, so, yes.
Have we heard anything in regards to funding for the pool from the state?
So, we'll have an update for you at the next meeting. Dr. Big?
Mr. Corey, you were very kind last week, and gave me a personal hard hat tour of the construction, and I appreciate that.
Those are funny.
You, you said and repeated today that though the completion, the quote-unquote completion of the construction will happen this spring, it's the punch list, it's the bringing of the furniture, it's the final check, which will probably keep it from being actually occupied until possibly as late as the beginning of the fall semester, my, and a thought that I presented to you, and I will publicly repeat the idea, is because the current senior class has been inconvenienced by the lack of those facilities, and is probably not even going to get to enjoy one day of its use, would, would you consider the very last day that the seniors are students on campus, that they and only they be allowed to have a brown bag lunch in the new dining hall, whether it's on, on the floor, or whether it's folding tables, so they can at least graduate saying that they got to enjoy one day in the new facility?
We'll certainly consider that, we've had a couple of other requests, hey, is there any way via grad night that we could do something in there, along those lines, but for seniors who have been interrupted for their entire senior year on this one, that would be a great, a great idea for them.
You know, I've been telling the seniors that asked me, it's going to be completed before you graduate, that's true, but technically it's not true.
Right, right, no, that's a good idea, thanks. No, that is it for now.
Okay, item C1, public comment, I do have a number of speaker cards this evening, I want to give all of you the opportunity to comment, just to remind you, you do have three minutes, the board allows 20, 20 minutes, but I'm going to try to make this work as best we can, for each of you, if you want to just have a few comments, instead of your full three minutes, it will just allow us to, to keep the board needing moving and conducting the district's business. So, the first speaker is Carl Johnson.
Thank you, everyone, board members, staff, I just want to say first how much we appreciate your efforts in working on behalf of our community and our kids. Secondly, I am a parent, a proud parent of a sophomore here at high school, who informed me that there's a possibility of adding an AP Psychology class next year, I just want to speak in favor of that, if it is a possibility, that's a class that my daughter, in the middle of her classmates, would greatly benefit from, although I need one more person around the house psychoanalyzing me, and I will, but I think it would be a fantastic opportunity for the kids, I think you should consider it, but I'm lost, thank you.
Jack Foley.
Hello, I'm Jack Foley, I'm also a student at the high school, I'm a junior, and I'm also talking about AP Psychology. When applying for college, colleges like to look at what courses you take, what your transfer it looks like, and the high school is severely lacking in AP courses than it has when compared to other colleges. This year, most juniors have the ability to take three, some who do art or Spanish can take up to five, but for the vast majority of students, you can only take three AP courses, and this is a, this is a really big problem, because most schools like the Santa Barbara and around the country can take, you know, five or six their junior year, so a lack of AP classes for the junior and the senior class really diminishes our ability to, when applying to college, having access to those courses, so, and AP Psychology is one that I'm very interested in, and a lot of other people, I don't know if you've seen the list, but it was like Asian students that signed up to want to take the class, so obviously it's very popular, and it would be, it's really interesting, and we have the facilities to teach it, and I think that if the school wants to be more competitive, they should, and the students who definitely do want to be more competitive, should push for adding this course, among others, there are, there are a lot of others that could be added, also, there, we've been losing off, losing out on a lot of electives this year with a lot of the teachers leaving, and AP Psychology would be another one that students could use, that's all I have.
Jack, what are some other courses that you'd like to see AP?
Other courses that I'd like to see AP, I'm very interested in AP Art History, which is another one that has been presented and has a lot of popularity, I also like AP Comparative Government, which is similar, a lot of students have shown support for that course, those are the ones I'm interested in, but also I think we should have more support for other, they don't, other non-AP classes, because we really are losing out on a lot of electives that I think is a big problem for students of any.
You said there was a list that the students had put together?
Yes, the AP US and AP Euro classes this year have, we, they were presented with four options of classes we wanted to take, that being AP Psychology, AP Art History, AP Comparative Government, and CP Military History, and we signed our names and wrote down which ones we wanted to take, I think Mr. Mullen has them, and I'm almost running out of time, but, yes, so there is a list of students who are interested in this.
Thanks, Jeff.
Hello, I'm also going to be talking about AP Psychology and the, like Jack Foley has stated, a lot of students at this high school are upset at the lack of, not only is the lack of AP classes in general, but the lack of options, because those who do take all the AP classes provided, are kind of forced to take classes they may not be most interested in in order to remain competitive for their college applications, and personally, I'm interested in going into psychology when going to college, so I think that that will be pretty active, but also, I know it's a very popular, I don't want to scare you, but we have a petition about AP signatures that we presented to Mr. Wolf, who's the head of the studies department, and this is just a bunch of different students of all, or sophomores and juniors, who said, who expressed an interest in taking AP Psychology, like Jack said, they're, they're on the elective, but AP Psychology is the one that has expressed the most common interest, and we have the facilities for it, Mr. Mullen has expressed an interest in teaching it, has the credentials, and is setting the one to go to the summer AP conference to learn how to teach to test better, it has a higher pass rate than AP US History and AP Government History, with our schools both do exceptionally well in those tests anyway, both taught also by Mr. Mullen, so not only is it a very doable class, it would be a very popular class at our school, and, yeah, it's kind of a necessity.
Thank you, thank you. So Haley, who is next here, if you'll forgive me, I can't read this, but I know you Haley, hello, nice to see you.
Yes, I'm Haley Dixon-Rehore, I'm a teacher in Santa Barbara, and I am the parent of a current junior, Brock Rehore, and I have an incoming freshman, and I do, I'm just here to express my support for the addition of AP Psychology, I just think the more varied courses that we can offer to all of our students, the better, and it sounds like the AP students expressing interest, that's a lot already, and my daughter, who's an incoming freshman, said she'd love to take it as well, she's allowed to as a freshman, so just want to encourage the consideration back in that first.
That was on her radar as a freshman.
Yes, and she wants that next year.
Okay. And so the next speaker will be Brock, is Brock here?
Hello, thank you board members for having me tonight, I just reiterate some of the things that my friends and my mother stated, I think this is, this is a very important course to put in the classes that we are going to be having in our school, especially as seniors, there's kind of a lack of advanced classes that we need to take, I think the vast majority of classes available to seniors taking the AP or honors route tends to be more STEM classes, and I think it's important that we have a broad range of classes to offer to our students, especially our grad students, I think there are also a variety of benefits that could come to this, offering this class to lower grades, such as freshmen and sophomores, I think it's generally a more easy, less intimidating AP class, and so if students who generally feel, I mean, I know myself personally, I felt very intimidated going into AP Euro as a sophomore, and I think if there could be more of an entry-level AP course for students to take in their earlier years of high school, they would become less intimidated, therefore, there would be a lot of incentive for them to take higher-level classes, once they, you know, they realize it's doable and effort, and therefore be capable of doing it, so, yeah, I think it's, as my friend said, it's a necessity to have, to offer to our higher-achieving students, as well as students who are interested in taking higher-achieving classes, but don't necessarily know the routing, which they don't know about, because I think, although this kind of year is off to the side a little bit, I think one of the big issues at our school is pretty much by sophomore year, there's two set-in-stone tracks that you can take in high school, and it seems that there are a lot of kids in the middle ground, I personally have felt this struggle, and I have a lot of friends who have felt this struggle too, and where if students begin their high school years by taking classes that don't necessarily challenge them, are not the most interesting to them, they're much more likely to become less inspired, to do less work in school, and therefore have that mindset the rest of high school, which is, I mean, awful, I think, it's terrible to reinforce the mindset that what they're doing is not important from a very early age, and so I think a class like this, that is an entry-level advanced course, like the pass rate nationally for AP Psychology is 65, as compared to the 55% of US government, would be a great entry-level AP course to offer to both sophomores and freshmen, but as well as our upperclassmen, and overall, I think it's a wonderful course to add to our AP program.
First of all, students who've been really prepared, thank you, this is great, you said something about STEM classes, science, technology, engineering, and math, can you reclarify or clarify, or should you restate that for me?
Yes, of course, so, I mean, seniors, the majority of their options there is, in terms of advanced placement courses, the options are government and literature, and then all other AP courses available to students at the senior year are all science and math-based, so AP Bio, AP Physics, AP Chem, AP Stats, AP Cal, it's overwhelmingly in the realm of math and science, and so I think it's important that we balance out the scale a little bit.
Great, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Kami Stevens.
Thank you for having me. That was my nephew and my son over there. I really, really, really appreciate the time that you're giving us to speak and to share. I'm a proud parent of a student who's currently at the high school and a graduate of the high school and another student who will be coming in a couple of years. I'm also an educator in the Santa Barbara School District for 27 years. I'm a strong believer in attending and supporting local schools. And one of the needs I see at our school here at San Ynez is the lack of options for students. And so I had the opportunity for my students, or my children, to be able to go to the Santa Barbara schools, but we've chosen to stay local because we are a big believer in that. So I do want to speak on behalf of AP Psychology, the need for that to have more rigorous classes and more options available to students and just more options for students in general in electives. So thank you for talking and taking the time to listen to me, so thank you.
Alicia Espinoza Tores.
Good evening, thanks for having me. I'm here because my daughter, who's over there, Naomi Torres, is a sophomore here at San Ynez. And she asked me to come on her behalf, but on behalf of all the students here today that are interested in taking AP Psychology. My family moved to San Ynez about a year and a half ago from Illinois. Very different, exciting. And you know, I've been so, I can only express the gratitude I feel for her to be part of such a close knit community with a school that offers such a personalized, individualized experience. Had Naomi attended high school in Illinois, she would have been one in thousands. I have come to learn that a small school community can have its drawbacks as well. In Illinois, my daughter would have had access to 29 offerings at her local public school. In Santa Barbara, she would have had 20, which is almost twice as many offerings as in San Ynez. As a former reader and evaluator for the Gates Women Tuition Scholarship, as a reader and evaluator for a reputable private college, for UCLA, UC Berkeley, and UC Irvine, I can assure you without reservation that the number of AP courses reflected on a student's application matters because ultimately, it's all relative. Our San Ynez students are competing in a non-discriminate landscape where they are universally evaluated by GPA, rigorous course load, et cetera, and assigned application points accordingly, regardless of setting or small school context. They already face incredible odds in the scholarship and admission landscape. Beyond high school, social sciences are the general educational requirement for college. Psychology fulfills that requirement. General courses are often overcrowded with hundreds of students in a classroom, in most public institutions, that is. For students who are accustomed to small school environments, this can be very jarring. Why not provide our students with the opportunity to meet a requirement and explore psychology in an optimal learning environment with teachers they are familiar with and trust? It's your duty as an institution to set San Ynez students up for success, creating access to as many opportunities as possible. So it's not just about individual students that we're here representing, individual students. It's also about bolstering the reputation of the institution and raising it to the standards of other surrounding institutions and those nationally. So I'm here to ask you politely, so please consider not why you should include AP Psychology as a course offering, but to really consider why you wouldn't. Thank you.
Sandy Mullen.
Sorry, you don't have to walk. I'm old and I fell in Brooklyn. Hi, I'm Sandy Mullen. In this study, I'm probably Mrs. Mullen. So I came around the school for a long time, 24 years. And when we first moved here, AP was just starting. Tori was one of the first banners to teach AP classes and it blossomed. There was just this excitement that came over the high school. I have a current sophomore, but I'm also the mother of two of them. They both go to top tier colleges, along with Cam's daughter, went to both Berkeley. And they, and their juniors and seniors, were able to take five AP courses and they did it, thanks Tori, and did really well. And they got into the universities all at their choice because they were that. And just as we just heard, these kids are numbers and stats when people are reading. They're good, they can have these big colleges, particularly UCs these days. You know, it's all about tests and what their transfers are like. And to keep them competitive with someone from Santa Barbara who's also tied to UC Santa Barbara or UCLA or the Claremont Colleges or wherever, it's important, I think, to have these options. My girls were just blessed to go to school here. They were really fortunate to get the level of rigor, the quality of the teaching, the staff is still amazingly talented. And I just think that adding another AP course or two or three or five in other electives for non-AP students is just a tremendous honor and tradition in San Ynez as well.
Hi again. I am here also to talk about AP Psychology. So when my cousin and I were about 12, 13, we both told each other that we were going to take Psychology. And as we've gone through our lives, gone through, she lives in Northern California and we're looking at our courses, she's been able to take AP Psychology, AP Human, AP World, classes that are offered here. So of course, when looking at stats and numbers, as I said before, she's going to look way more appealing that she's able to take these classes. Psychology is one of the most competitive fields to go into. Most of our high school courses are set up in addition to STEM. If you want to go to those courses, you can take AP Calc, AP Chemistry, that looks good. But Psychology, we don't offer AP Psychology. So when applying, many students have to apply to their different majors and then hopefully get to switch in. That's not good enough. We should have the students here be able to be set up for what they want to be in. They're the next doctors, teachers, people that can come back and work here even. We can have people work back to give back to our community, just as you are giving to all of us. My friends are here, my friends' parents are here, I've grown up with all of them. And I know that they're all set up to do great things. And I would love to have the opportunity to study more about AP Psychology with them. We're here for one purpose, the purpose of the future. So if you can take this into consideration, that would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Gary.
Hi, thank you for letting me talk to you about AP Psychology also. This is so far beyond my comfort zone, so I'm just going to make a blanket apology to the protocol anything. So I'm in support of your offering this class. A lot of people have touched on things that I wanted to say already. I really believe in increasing elective options for high achieving students. For students who are highly motivated, this class offers a chance to explore another field while still building and retaining their competitive GPA. And some high achieving students resort to taking AP classes that hold no interest for them, solely for the academic value that classes have on their transfer. I also want to mention, goes along with what someone else said. This class potentially can offer a challenge to students who are unwilling to risk a graduation requirement, but want to try out taking an AP class. This is a true elective. It would let them try it out. Students who are nervous about trying AP class can find that this opens the door for more rigorous classes. And that would increase their academic confidence. And by succeeding in this AP class, it's possible that some students who might characterize themselves as not really the school could begin to really, really reevaluate who they are and what they're capable of accomplishing. And I'm probably going to say something you already know. And that is that this, this class for students who would go to community colleges and would want to transfer from there to UCs or other schools, this class satisfies the Agnes requirements for Subject Four, which is the Social Behavioral Sciences. And that's important for students who maybe aren't driven yet, but they're going to be, kind of, they're like the late bloomers. They pick it up, they decide they want to transfer. If they are able to complete this class here, it just makes that transfer process so much easier. Okay, so really quickly, suppose a student loves humanities or science. This class lets them take it in high school and they love it, they get all the everything they need. If you have a student who is a STEM student, you know, there are a lot of STEM options at this school. However, this lets them get humanities stuff out of the way before they get to college so they can concentrate on their STEM classes in college. Okay, with 20 seconds, I've got to do the last thing I want to do. So I want to quote from Utopia, this is from April 18th. This is a teacher who taught high school psychology, this is what she said. "As the Office of Allison Health at the US Department of Health and Human Services reports..." "...mental health statistics related to teen anxiety, depression, and suicidal ideation continue to worsen. Studying psychology could help promote many of the social and emotional learning skills that are crucial to students' academic achievement and mental health. We can help students apply the research they study in the class to their own lives to develop a more complex, metacognitive approach to processing their own identity. The study of psychology can help our students become collaborative and empathetic citizens. Students want to understand themselves and others. And we as educators have the opportunity to help them gain self-awareness and insight, learn social and emotional skills like collaboration and communication, and master academic skills such as scientific research." I'm going to stop there. But there is a benefit to psychology specifically that goes beyond the academics and I think that that's important to consider. I know you're considering any other AP classes, but I would really want you to consider this one. I have this if anyone wants to copy.
Thank you. Isaac Soto.
Hello, board members. I say all these things with the greatest respect for all of you and all you do for our community. My name is Isaac Soto, I'm a junior. To many students, it feels that although the majority of things that make our school special are disappearing, our unique classes and electives seem to slowly be diminishing each year. For example, in Introduce Education, a valuable class is no longer available at our school. And courses such as Auto and East are at extreme risk of not returning. Not only does Auto have thousands of dollars worth of equipment, but every year, it is full of kids who are passionate about working with their hands. I've talked to many Auto kids about Mr. Hill retiring. I told them, they should come to these board meetings and speak to you guys. They said they didn't, they said they thought, they, sorry, they said they gave up on the school board, on school politics. Why would these kids feel like you've given up on them? Furthermore, East, which is the only class like it in the entire state of California, provides all clubs and activities with unique posters and graphics to promote themselves. Additionally, I encourage the school board to support the arts. For far too long, we've only had one art teacher. An alo, Mr. Goodman and Ms. Martin were great art teachers. It's impossible to ask them to teach five different subjects in a single period for six periods a day. These hands-on courses are what more than half of our students desire. You can't expect every student to fit into an AP standard. Kids learn differently and we know this. These classes allow students who wouldn't rather sell the rigorous courses, excel in activities that are important to them. They give them a place to thrive and grow at their school. They give them a reason to come to school every single day. Also, this school isn't necessarily supporting kids who do want to fit into the AP standard. For kids who would like to go to advanced colleges like the Ivy Leagues, it feels to them that they're not offering enough AP courses. I've talked to several students and sometimes they say, I wish I went to Deep Pier San Marcos. Sometimes I wish I went to Deep Pier San Marcos. And I say that with a heavy heart. I have great pride in our school, but it's hard to have pride in our school when it feels like the administration is failing against students. And you may say that it is hard to do because it's hard to pay for it. And it is, you guys have to take a lot of time and work to provide for all our students. But if my facts are correct, you're already violating the student-to-teacher ratio and the admin-to-teacher ratio, which is constantly going to pay for this mistake every year. So I come here to say, listen to the students, support extracurriculars, encourage the arts, hands-on courses, and APs as well. Listen and support the students. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey Isaac, would you mind connecting with me sometime this week? I'd love to follow up with you on that. Okay, yeah, thank you very much.
Julian Knight.
I'm not talking about AP Euro, sorry. Or AP Psychology. Good evening. I realize that budget decisions can be difficult, but I hope that you can prioritize some of the items being considered. A multi-tiered system of support or MTSS plan has been instrumental in making change in other high schools that are comparable to San Ynez. Most of the high schools in the county now have a behavior support system in place along with a licensed mental health counselor. I think we need to look at what has been effective in helping curb things like teen drug use and addressing mental health issues by providing true care from all sides in the medication system. If anyone can enact change in a child's life, it is a teacher, but they need to begin with the tools to be successful in that change. When classrooms are overcrowded, when only 37.3% of our local high school school junior students met or exceeded California state standards in math and only 64% in English, something needs to change. With an MTSS program, help is provided for students that are showing signs of need. We need these reinforcement systems to provide a better outcome for our students and get them early intervention. There is a major gap for students that don't have an IEP. An unlicensed intern is not enough for the major problems on campus. When we look at examples of what is effective for curbing drug use and addressing the downward spiral, I think we need to look at places like Portugal. They are a conservative Catholic country that took a proactive approach to drug use by assigning social workers, intervention specialists, trade school opportunities, and more for people that were suffering from addiction instead of putting them into the justice system. Once they implemented this, they found that they curbed teen drug use so drastically that the numbers are so low they can't even track them. This shows us that if we take a proactive approach, we can truly make a change in a child's life. Along with a mental health counselor, we need to bring back health class. Not only did health class cover important topics like sex, education, they also addressed anxiety and depression and helped remove the stigma of mental health so that students could speak up and reach out. I also want to implore you to keep the full-time English position that is on your agenda. I understand that by eliminating this position, Mr. Swannitz would then have to take the position from another teacher if he exercises his senori and writes within his three-year agreement. We desperately need another English teacher and a math teacher for our students. The classes are too large and the state testing results are not acceptable. One of our math teachers left the math department to become an athletic director and we can never fill her shoes. But we desperately need another math teacher as well. I implore you to implement a full MTSS plan, a full-time licensed mental health counselor, bring back health class, keep the full-time English teacher position, add another math position, and increase the staff budget so we can help our students become productive members of society. Thank you.
Thank you.
Joanne, I have a question for you.
Yes.
You correctly enough pointed out at the beginning that our school is sub-average in our students' standardized math and English scores. But I'm not drawing the same conclusion that I believe you suggested that institution of an MTSS program would provide the valuable services needed so that those scores would be improved. I'm not sure I see that as a cause and effect.
So mental health, I believe, is a major, important part of our students' learning environment. And without that support system in place, our students are absolutely lacking. And there's a huge gap on campus for non-AP students. So I think it coincides with teaching as well. We don't support the teachers, we don't increase the teaching budget. We keep cutting as, as one of the students mentioned, paying the fine because we are doing math, having overcrowded classrooms, which in some cases, they can't even fit the desks in the classrooms for the students that are in there. So I think that also creates a mental health problem. You're being ignored in a way when you don't have a teacher that can reach every student sitting in their classroom.
I agree, we need mental health. I absolutely agree with that. I'm just not sure that I see the evidence that bringing the MTSS program is going to result in improvements of our math and English scores. It might, I just think that that... It might, I just think that that is more conjecture than fact.
I don't think there's a study to show you the numbers, but we're down 8% in one and 7% in the other from last year, and our numbers continue to dwindle. There's something playing a role, and our teachers need the resources.
Well said, well said. Thank you. Augustine Viscano.
Good afternoon. And I strongly agree that we need the classes that have been mentioned tonight and the mental health counselor. And I agree 100% with what our faculty association recommendations. In addition to what the letter says, I would like to add that in my opinion, there is a huge urgency on the recommendation about psychologists. All the community members, as well as my colleagues, have already mentioned the importance. I feel that all also understand the importance and significance of having an expert that can help us coordinate the emotional wellbeing of our students. I'm happy that we agree. However, what I am a little concerned about is the urgency. In my view, that person should already be here because please do not wait until the whole semester. Aside from the fact that we will have many sophomores, juniors, and seniors that will be needing our psychologist's help, our freshmen will be coming from our peer schools, which are smaller than our school. Many of those students come scared because it's intimidating to go to a peer school where everyone there has already had one or two or three years under their belt. We want an expert to be there at the beginning of the year for those that are stressing out. A psychologist should be hired before the end of this year so that she or he can get familiarized with our school and have the summer to come up with a plan on how best help our students, whether it will be sometimes individually or sometimes in groups or in the classes. A psychologist can also help us as teachers and administrators as a consultant that can coordinate the emotional range for the multi-tier support system. So this person will be helping our students not only with curing ongoing emotional problems, but will be helping our students with coping mechanisms. It will also help us close the achievement gap because we know many of our low-performing students do need emotional support. How does our community motivate you and inspire you to give 100% of your potential without breaking you down? How do you, board members, motivate and inspire our principal, our vice principal, our teachers and staff to give 100% of their potential without breaking us down? How do we, as counselors, teachers, coaches, et cetera, push our students every day at school and at home when they're doing the homework, to give 100% of their potential without breaking them down? I'm hoping sooner than later, an educational, emotional, mental health counselor, psychologist can help us answer that question. Thank you.
Dear San Diego's Board of High School District Board members, thank you for your consideration during this critical time where you will be making important decisions which affect our students, staff, and community. Our association created a budget prioritization survey to provide feedback reflecting the needs of our students. You have already received a copy of the survey results via email last Friday and provided examples in the back. Faculty took the survey with the blanket assumption that all positions vacant due to the success of the retirement incentive would be backfilled. Based on the results of the survey, here are the top priorities of our association for the hopes that the board will consider. Restore the staff services position at full-time. This will allow the library tech to be in the library full-time, granting unrestricted student access to the important resource of the library. Ms. Rask editing computers. And then the teachers will have more time to serve students because there will be a full-time staff member providing valuable support to ensure teachers have the materials they need to be equipped for the classroom. The staff services position enables teachers to spend less time in the copy room and more time in their classrooms, helping students prepare in lessons or grading, all of which positively affects students. Reinstate a full-time health teacher to provide essential curriculum to support students' personal growth and provide them with knowledge and skills to make healthy decisions on and off campus. Consider hiring more teachers to reduce the class sizes. This is especially true in the math department where three sections of math students were distributed to existing sections when I left the math department to become the athletic director. Additionally, with the retirement incentive savings, there is an opportunity to consider more elective offerings and/or additional teachers. That's why I am pro AP psych, I'm just going to add that. Hire a full-time student psychologist or licensed counselors to support the mental and emotional health of students. This will help faculty and staff provide a direct path for students to get professional guidance and tools for their mental wellbeing. This is a brief summary of the top priorities indicated by our survey results. It is our intent to keep students' needs at the focus of these priorities. We fully realize that there are a wide variety of variables at play, and we want to continue providing the best resources and opportunities for our students. This will require a continued positive and clear line of communication with the people who are on the front line of student success, the faculty and staff. Thank you for listening and considering these actions to better our school and students.
And Ashley, just real, upside down, just to clarify, in the packet, the list is a rank list, right? So it's one through nine.
Correct, one, I think, through nine.
Yes. And so hats off to Faculty Association for the work they did there. I did meet with leadership yesterday, appreciate the communication. Ashley and others have been fantastic.
Andrew Olman.
He was, yeah, he was the CTA rep that did that. So anyway, thank you for the communication very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ashley. Michelle Dward.
My name is Michelle Dward. And just so everybody knows, I have a daughter and niece that attended 10 years ago, this was in 2008, and they benefited from a robust education here at San Diego High, including three years of Latin with Mr. Muller. And we have a robust elective program, we had a strong, we had an international baccalaureate program, which a group of parents, we tried to keep because it did get canceled, but we were promised, because we had to give up the Ivy program, that the parents were promised to have a robust A and B program that was going to continue. And as you can see, it did not. This was under the direction of Fred Van Gucht, and I think he had great vision for this school. But what I'm here to talk about is, the superintendent's job as a leader is to create an environment where every employee can work productively and thrive, and foster a vision, innovative vision, with various academic pathways for all students. It is obvious that Superintendent Corey has done the exact opposite. Is this board concerned about the hostile work environment the superintendent has created and continues to cost the taxpayers and the students? And I'm talking about students and college applications as well. Four women dedicated to education resigned and felt compelled to file complaints against the district. Two of the complaints resulted in a $200,000 secret settlement, legal payment funded by the taxpayers, and negatively impacted the students. The unknown amount of fees that Superintendent Corey has expended in the future legal expenses for the district over the years will be on your shoulders as a board for protecting him. Just six months ago, the board voted except for Dr. Baker because he used script thinking skills. You all voted to renew Superintendent Corey's three-year con employment contract. This was at the same time of the commencement of an investigation of Superintendent Corey. And why was his contract renewed so swiftly? I begged you not to renew that contract. As a reminder for you and for members of the public, here are just a few findings from one of the SOG group investigation reports. I have one of them that I received from one of the employees. Number one, there is sufficient evidence to show Superintendent Corey made comments to district employees that he thinks females look more professional in skirts or dresses than in pants. There is sufficient evidence to show Superintendent Corey spoke to and directed supervisors to speak about several employees about their attire, which included leggings, yoga pants, jeans, open knit sweaters, that he thought was not professional. And there's sufficient evidence to show that there is not a dress code for these district employees. There is sufficient evidence to show that Superintendent Corey commented, we have a little bit more time, please?
That's up to the chair.
Commented about wearing red, but told females they looked nice and told females that they smelled nice.
Ms. Dward, if you could just wrap it up there, we would appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Okay.
Thank you.
There's a list of more findings, and if anybody would like it, please ask, I'm going to email it to you. But the lesson learned here is that if we wasn't so focused on employees and what these females were doing, maybe we could have better academics at this school. And the lesson about the need to, over the years, should be, we don't call our disrental, we don't call these employees that filed claims disrental liars or bad employees. And I hope that the board will consider listening to the females as well as the men here in this school.
Thank you, Michelle. Okay, so at this time, the board will move on from public comment.
We're still in public comment. Ms. Preston, may I make a comment regarding the AP classes that has generated so much commentary?
Can we perhaps include that during board member comments?
Well, except most of these people will probably be gone by then. So if you can get everybody to promise that they won't leave, then absolutely.
Okay. Just if you can just make it brief, if you would, please.
I'm totally supportive of the need for more AP classes. And so what I fear is that, like so many things we talk about, it'll get attention during the board meeting, and then during the next board meeting, it'll not be discussed again. So what I would ask is, especially as it pertains to the AP psychology class, Mr. Corey, if you could provide us with a fiscal impact report, which would include, number one, do we already have on staff the faculty that could handle this course, they're certified to be able to teach that course? Number two, do we have the ability to readjust their assignment in a short amount of time so that before the next course catalog is produced for this upcoming fall semester, that can be included? Number three, I would be interested in knowing what other electives, what other AP courses we currently have on staff, faculty that would be qualified and willing to teach. That's the quickest way to get to the end zone for the upcoming semester, otherwise we've lost another graduating class of students.
This will all actually be a part of the March 26th, and some of these things are already in motion, I'll be sharing those with you at that time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, John. Okay, moving on to approval of the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So will.
Mrs. Claudio, do I have a second?
A second.
Mrs. Baughcock?
I'm a motion and second.
Do I have any discussion? Roll call, please.
Thank you. Dr. Baker?
Aye.
Aye. Did you call me Dr. Pundrick? No, excuse me. You're in the tube. You're in the TV zone.
Thank you.
Mrs. Burtonis.
Aye.
Mrs. Baughcock.
Aye.
Mrs. Preston.
Aye. Motion carries five zero. Okay.
Okay, at this time, the board will move on to the action agenda. Item I, two, approval of 2019, 2020, second interim report, second interim certification, and second interim multi-year assumptions. Ms. Lewis, please.
I'd just like to put it on my main stage.
Thank you.
So with the, with each budget iteration, there are several forms that are required on top of the actual budget itself. That's why you see such a large list before you, is all different parts of the budget that I'll be presenting this evening that we spoke about last month as well. So this presentation is fairly brief, given the fact that we reviewed 90% of the information pertinent to the second interim budget at last month's meeting. So rather than going through the whole, how the budget works, what we're focusing on, what our priorities are, since we discussed that last month, what we're going to focus on tonight is just the differences between the first interim budget and the second interim budget. If you have questions about any of the other stuff that we talked about last month, I'm happy to revisit, but I haven't included it in this slide show so that I'm boring you deaf two months in a row. So I'll start with our revenue changes. We see, we've seen a decrease of really a negligible amount in unrestricted revenue under a percent. So our revenue is holding steady, which is a good sign for us, and also taking into consideration that we've been slowly increasing our projections for revenue to more closely actuals. So that's a good sign that we are meeting those revenue projections. We have an increase in restricted revenue of about 7.5% for a total overall percent, for a total overall increase that is less than 8%. The increase in restricted revenue is due to monies tied to a slightly higher APA than the projections we have been using for federal revenue. Our APA being a little bit higher at last year's E2 than we have been projecting, so we received additional revenues tied to those APAs, about the APA. Expenditure changes. So we've seen an increase of 1.4%. So I use the percent here because if you look at the dollar amount, for most of us, $174,000 seems like a stark increase in expenditures, but if you look at it overall, it's less than 1.5%. It's about 1.5% increase in unrestricted expenditures. This is overarching because of overtime and the overlapping between classified positions for previous employees leaving, paying out vacation pay, new employees coming in, training, and one-time replacements of our athletic tech, athletic supplies, and our new computer lab equipment replacement across a couple of different departments. We also saw an increase in expenditures on the restricted side of the house. This is directly related to the increase in revenue. So when we have restricted dollars, for the most part, with the exception of a few pots such as lottery, you don't want to carry over or roll over those funds, specifically with the federal funds. The federal funds, they don't release those funds to you until you've spent them all. So if you were to carry over funds into the next year, it would impact by reducing the revenue received in the next fiscal year. So because the revenue increased in those restricted accounts, we've increased the expenditures associated. That's teacher professional development, that's D-Lab and E-Lab supplies and those types of things. So those are expenditures that are easy to reclassify and move from the unrestricted side of the house to the restricted, or increase outreach, increase PD, those types of things. So that's why you see the increase there. The overall increase was really, really moderate, at 1.6%. So I'm pretty comfortable with where we're going, we're staying, staying the course pretty well. To review our NPD fund balance and excess reserves, we look at a multi-year perspective. So we're looking at not just this year, but the two years out. We do this because having an excess reserve in the current year is great and it's good information to have, but seeing how that excess reserve plays into the next year's budget and the next year's budget is extremely important because if we were just to look at 1920 and we saw an excess of 2.7 million and we didn't take into account what we use in 2021 or 2122, it would look like we have a lot more to play with than we do. Because if you notice, in 1920, we have almost 3 million in excess, but by 2122, just staying the course, not adding positions, not adding, taking into consideration negotiations or any unknown variables, we're already down to 2 million excess in reserve, give or take. So it's important to see not only what we have in this year, but what we're projected to have in the two out years, because it isn't growing, so keep that in mind. The other side, oh, I guess I should address, we are keeping a 3 million static minimum reserve, like I discussed last month. When we instituted the change from the 30% minimum reserve to the 3 million, we did so for a host of reasons. One of the reasons was that we were looking at the olive grove and the potential impact and the fact that 30% on top of what we're going to have to pay olive grove made the 30%... made the 30% reserve that we were supposed to keep quite large. So in order to combat that and to be more realistic with what we needed to keep in reserves and not just looking like recording excess money, we made it from, we changed it from 30% of expenditures to a static 3 million. When we did that, we were looking at 30%. So when we made the change, we were right around 30%. Already in 1920, several years later, we're down to 22%. By 2122, we're down to 21.3. For a basic A district to carry less than a 20% reserve is fiscally foolish. So I would recommend that you take that 3 million into account and have on the back burner the idea that we want to keep at least a 20% reserve.
So Ms. Lewis, I appreciate our budget seems to change every quarter. But with that as a caveat, if everything is held constant, our excess reserve is going to be gone in five years. We will then have a balance of just the three, required 3 million.
Yes, that's correct.
And what was a lot of money, 3 million in 19, or in 2019, is not going to be worth anywhere near as much in another five years.
Correct. And we do have a deficit. I know it's totally bipolar to talk about millions and millions in excess reserve, but also to talk about deficit, but we do have a deficit. So that 3 million is even less substantial when you take into consideration that if we are left with just that 3 million and a deficit, it puts you guys in a position you don't want to be in. Nobody wants to have to make decisions with their back against the wall. So we just need to keep that into consideration when we figure out how to purposefully and conservatively spend the reserve with the things that we heard this evening, so.
At least I could have just really quickly, so in regards to, so this will really be, it'll be a multi-pronged conversation that we have in March. We do have an opportunity to do some really solid things for next year and in the future, but we have to keep this in mind as we go there. Alicia has allowed me to be a little less conservative than perhaps she should be. And I think finding that balance between a thoughtful spend down, while simultaneously in a parallel fashion, addressing, we were talking about, if we do not tend to the structural portion, there's some very hard decisions that are waiting out there. So how do we find that balance? So that discussion on the 26th will include benefits to staff, benefits to students, and also what is the fiscal implications of doing that? I do think we're in a position where we can, pardon me, stretch things a little bit, but we'll need to be very thoughtful about that three and even five-year outlook, keeping in mind if we replace all staff, which a case could be made to do that for class sizes, and we'll be looking at data concerning what are our class loads in our core elective? You heard some about math in particular tonight. How do we keep those at reasonable levels? If we choose to backfill all of the positions that participated, in the certificate of positions that participated in the layoff, or that's a layoff, not the layoff, the retirement, I'm so sorry. If we choose to backfill all of those, our five-year projection is a $250,000 chipping away. It does not retire, no pun intended, it does not retire the structural deficit. And if we're looking at all good things, staff services, a psychologist, health teacher, all of those things, we've just got to find that balance. So I think that's really what Alicia's trying to get at here. How do we stay attentive to that, keep our long-term goggles going, and have a thoughtful spend down of the reserve, and then don't ultimately wind up at that spot where we've done more than we should have?
You don't want to be in a position where you are able to bring back or add new positions and have all these awesome programs that everybody becomes attached to over three years, only to get five years down the road and say, I'm sorry now, we can't do it. We need to really focus on creativity and how we can add these and how we can leverage current staff, the classes that they could teach, and creativity and collaboration between staff and administration is going to be the key to finding the way through a purposeful spend down.
But the good news is, we are in a position to have that conversation. And faculty has been very good, have had some very good conversations with some very creative ideas to make some good things happen, both with existing staff and also their suggestions for bringing the staff back.
So if you take a look at the NYPD's, you may be alarmed because you may say, wait, wait, wait. At first interim, the deficit did not look like almost $2 million in 2021. What the heck is going on? What's going on is since first interim, we've had the discussion that the football field needs to be replaced. So we have taken, in 1920, we have a sign, which is basically earmarking a million dollars for the football field and the baseball bleachers out of the ending fund out. So it stays there. We don't move it. We're not putting it in another account. It shows up in all the accounting. But at the bottom of the state forms, we make a comment and we say, please subtract a million dollars from this balance because we are already planning on spending it on the football field and the baseball bleachers. So because we did that in 1920, I moved that ending, that assignment into expenditures in 2021. So what that did, even though it's one time, it falsely changes the numbers to make it, it inflates them basically for that one year from what would be about 384,000 of a deficit to 1.7. So just know that there's nothing crazy going on there with the exception of the plan. It's not concrete, no contracts have been signed. It is just in the budget because it is planned that a million dollars, give or take, will be spent on the football field and the baseball bleachers.
Question, of course, this isn't, we're looking at a class action lawsuit and we're one of the lead partners in that. And so there's a possibility, a good possibility, that we could recover that money that we're putting up for the football field, correct? Thank you.
I've talked about this as well a little bit too, but we do want to be careful in making sure that we don't replace the football field and take away one of our options for an award. So if one of the choices for an award in the settlement is your field gets replaced for free, no charge, we take care of it. But we've already done that and that's the only thing the judge approves, we could put ourselves in a position we don't want to be in. Now, we've planned this expenditure. We are working with counsel. We are letting counsel know. We're in the process of looking at things. Wouldn't you think no decision would be made before counsel signed off on it, telling us that we would not bar ourselves, so to speak, from a recovery? If that makes sense. But just know that if in, you know, the beginning of 2021, our lawyers tell us you cannot do that or you will not, you know, have a recovery, we won't do it.
Or do what?
Spend a million dollars for our money.
Are you saying not replace the football field turf?
Yes. What I'm saying is in 2021, if our attorneys say, we've gotten to that point where we're talking settlement, which we're not at yet, so we can't guesstimate that. But if we get to that place where we're talking settlement and the judge wants to order settlements of you replace the field turf on all these campuses or community locations, free of charge for those individuals, and that's the only recovery, that your recovery is limited to that, if we've already replaced it, that's a problem.
So I understand that. But our obvious thing is we're developing a situation where we're going to have a safety concern.
Right.
And we're heading towards replacement this summer. We don't have the luxury of waiting, summer pending a possible outcome from litigation. Help me understand that.
We're working through it with our attorneys as we speak. So we sent off letting them know that we're giving bids. They said, give us your bids. They're trying to incorporate it into the litigation. So it's just the caveat that if we're told to pump the brakes, we might have to bring that to you guys for that.
I can't believe an attorney would purposely put us in a position of increased liability. Scott, possibly the, one of the pieces of this puzzle is contacting our liability insurance carrier and see what their position is. If they're willing to take the added risk for the next five years, fine. Let's keep the unsafe astroturf. But I don't think that they're ever going to put us in that position.
No, they would. And honestly, our attorneys, when we spoke to them last week, said that they didn't think that was a possibility, but that they wanted us to just tell you that it could be a possibility. They don't believe that field turf would prefer to replace all these fields. They believe that field turf would prefer to just pay because it is highly likely that they'd get off cheaper just by paying everybody to get their field replaced because they'll pay an average amount or general.
The other thing to factor into the equation is there's a good possibility that if we do not replace the astroturf, there could be other schools that refuse to do visiting games here on our stadium. We lose all that income.
20% is possible. I'm definitely not advocating that you don't replace it. I'm just telling you what our attorneys told me I have to tell you. Don't talk about it. So it's unlikely that we'll get told that, but it is something that it would, you know.
So this is, this is kind of an interesting scenario, but I am very much concerned about safety. So I can see the logic behind moving forward because we could have a whole other laundry list of issues if we have, you know, one or more individuals that is hurt on our campus and we knew that that was a problem.
I agree with 100% and I believe this could be all get turned into this law. So just to reiterate, the reason the deficit, first of all, the reason the deficit looks inflated in 2021 is because of that moving of the million dollars from the ending fund balance in 1920 to actual expenditures because we are planning on spending it in 2021. If you remove those one-time expenditures, our deficit is looking more like 384,000 in 2021. Take that with a grain of salt because that does not include the positive impact from the retirement incentive, nor does it include any negative, by negative, I mean negative to the numbers, impact of adding positions or negotiations. So just know that those numbers are going to change probably the next time you see them. Impacts to consider when we look at NYPD, which is the multi-year projections. Again, negotiations will increase our expenditure. Retirement incentive will hopefully, I mean, it will, no matter what other means expenditures, but hopefully we can find creative ways to allow the reduction in expenditures to be on the larger side. And the restoration or addition of positions will increase expenditures. Are there any questions, comments?
Any questions from the board at this time?
So as part of approving the second interim, we are also approving the specific form for the multi-year projections, which is the current into out years, as well as the excess, the excess reserves of their own. But all the forms are included in the information that you have for the second interim. They're not separate.
Thank you very much.
I would move that we approve the 2019, 2022 interim report and all the things that go with it.
Second. Okay, Mrs. Bertness and Mrs. Clevinger, motion and second. Any discussion? No more comments. Roll call, please.
Dr. Baker?
Aye.
Mrs. Clevinger?
Aye.
Mrs. Bertness?
Aye.
Mrs. Babcock?
Aye.
Mrs. Preston?
Aye.
Thank you. Item I three, Leadership Associates contract, principal search. Mr. Corey?
Certainly. As a result of the board's action at the last meeting, we are in a position where we need to conduct a search for a new principal for San Onofre High School. It is my strong recommendation that we retain the services of a search firm to help us do this and conduct a process that results in better input from stakeholders, an opportunity to engage in a deeper process for what we want to, what are the traits that we want and skills that we want in a new principal for San Onofre High? And then also being able to allow ourselves to engage in a timeline process here that will get us to where we need to be by May. This particular firm conducts 80% of superintendent searches in the state of California. They're a highly sought-after firm to do this work. And they also conduct principal searches as well, most recently in this area, San Marcos High School. And also their ability to cast a much wider net, both in Northern and Southern California for a candidate, a high caliber candidate, is definitely an asset for us in this process. Questions?
Yes. Why would Leadership Associates be able to cast a wider net than any other firm?
So it's about networks and who you know. Two of the, if this contract is approved, the two people that would be assigned to conduct this search, one has deep roots in Southern California through the school administration and the other up in Northern California, Bay Area and North. And the firm, just by virtue of them having superintendents from all the state of California as well and conducting all of those searches, have access to a much broader base of candidates.
If we've signed on with a firm that is the one that 80% of districts use, why should we feel that we're going to receive their top attention as one of their clients?
So why do you think we wouldn't receive their top attention?
I would ask them, I want to be convinced that if a top candidate comes to you folks or if you identify a top candidate, how do we know that they're going to be presenting us in a most favorable light as opposed to any of their other clients?
Restate the last part?
If Leadership Associate is the company that 80% of the districts apparently are using when they're looking for a qualified candidate, so they're overwhelmed with clients.
I don't know that they're overwhelmed with clients.
80% sounds like...
I don't know that they're overwhelmed with clients. I don't have any indication of that at all. Or they wouldn't have picked us up.
Well, they picked us up because we're going to pay them $10,000.
So I would respectfully disagree with you. I don't believe that we're going to be in a place where they're so busy that they can't give us a quality search. Or I wouldn't have made the recommendation.
Which other companies did you look at?
This is the one that I went with.
One of our patrons sent me an email, possibly everybody got the same email I did, questioning whether the fact that our former superintendent is affiliated in some manner with this company.
Sure. So I sent a reply to the board on that one and he will not be a part of the search process.
What, since the board was 100% responsible for creating this vacancy, what involvement will the board have in filling this vacancy?
They'll absolutely be a part of the process. Okay, so I sent timelines for processes to the board. And so if, once this contract is approved, we'll be sitting down and talking about and confirming what we want that process to be with in terms of timelines.
So the board will not have any opportunity to?
Yes, it will.
To, I didn't get to finish my question, to review the applying candidates?
That's a question we can talk about. And as far as that specific question, I hadn't thought that one over.
In past years, when there's been, within this high school, other vacancies for principal, what involvement did the board have in making that decision?
I don't know. I wasn't here when the last one was here.
I was actually in, as I recall, I was on superintendent search and we had the, Chip Orton, who was the board president, was on that. I don't remember having board members on when we were doing the principal search.
Yeah, because that's a different, that's a different process, I appreciate, for superintendent than principal. I mean, I'll repeat the statement I just made a second ago. When it was the five of us that are 100% responsible for this vacancy being created, I think the five of us need to have more involvement than just rubber stamping a recommendation.
Sure. So the board can certainly have involvement in that. It's a conversation that Eileen and I will have. But in terms of intimate involvement in a process, there's one employee for the board that's a superintendent. In putting the principal process, certainly. When it comes to getting down into the minutia of some of those choices, that is not typically in a board's realm because it's not a board's employee per se. But Eileen and I will be talking about that process.
I wasn't, I wasn't asking to be involved in the minutia. I'm just asking to, that...
Sure. So an important detail, which you did reference, was screening applicants. That's a great level of detail. I mean, that is the core.
Will the board, through Leadership Associates, be allowed to provide questions that we would like asked?
Certainly. That's part of the development of what we want in a candidate. And so the questions will be reflected in that.
And then we will likewise be given answers to our... And then we will likewise be given answers to our questions or rather than just a summary statement.
I'm sorry.
If any of us board members provide you, Mr. Corey, questions that we specifically would like a candidate to be asked, then will that same board member be given a written answer to those questions? What I fear is going to happen is there would just be a summary opinion, uh, generalizing what this individual candidate's qualifications are.
Board members will certainly be able to contribute questions. Yes.
Wasn't quite an answer to my question.
Okay. So, so honestly, um, I, I, I would have appreciated some advance questions on this. It would have been really helpful for me to prepare for some of this. I have some of the answers to your questions. It really would have been helpful if you could have let me know in advance so I could dig a little deeper into that for you.
Usually, if I may, just for a moment, the protocol is, as I recall, is the superintendent is involved in that and with faculty, et cetera, and we're looking for a principal. And then the superintendent will bring his or her choice to the board. Okay. And then we have a chance to look at that and we vote on that, et cetera. But it's, it's all done. That's always the, the stated protocol of these kinds of things.
Ultimately, the board does vote on whether or not to approve the candidate.
One reason for. One reason for approving any candidate is knowing what other options were available. If this is the best that's being presented to us, then we might go with that person. But if there were better candidates, but we don't know that there were better candidates, then we would have no recourse.
I think one thing, John, we talked about it before, uh, is honoring the process. But in my experience, 35 years in education and being on probably, I don't know, a dozen or so principal searches, et ceteras, is, uh, that there's, the district develops the guidelines along with the board, the input from the board. And then the committee, there's a, you know, when you get down into the dirt, et cetera, the details, excuse me, um, is that there is a committee composed typically of staff representation.
Multiple stakeholders, yeah.
Yes, multiple stakeholders. Thank you. Parents, some, depending on what level it is, it could even be at the high school level, student, et cetera. And they actually would be doing, uh, a lot of the interviewing and get the personal feel, et cetera, and make, and then take that to the superintendent, make their recommendations. That's how it's worked for me, Eileen. We didn't.
That was my experience as well. So.
Chris, did you have something you wanted to say?
It was way back, but I.
Okay.
Does the, does the county ed office offer any, uh, help with, with search? I know they, we did for superintendent, but I'm not sure if they do.
They do.
If, and I, I can appreciate that this company probably, like you say, has a wider network.
Yes.
Than, um, just locally. But I was, I was curious about that. I, I would also say that I hope, uh, from everything that I've heard here, that we, um, realize that we're, we're looking for somebody, and especially after the audience this evening, that we're looking for someone that is just, um, really up on curriculum. And, um, is a, is a people person that just is able to work with our, our staff and understand all of the needs that we have with our budget, um, that we need to at least keep in mind what we can do to move forward to help our curriculum.
Mr. Corey, I'm, um, I'm still not convinced that just because you control 80% of the market, that means that Leadership Associates is necessarily the right company. I mean, I'm, remember the old advertising slogan of Avis, when you're number two, you try harder. And possibly that's maybe what we should have done is look for a second competing company.
Okay. Again, this, all right.
That's okay. So, Mr. Ward, I can't really take your card right now. Uh, your request to speak, so we're, because you didn't hand it to me prior to the agenda item.
But it's during the discussion before the vote. And because new information came to light that wasn't in the board packet, I think I should be able to, I think, ask the question.
Is there any information that's come to light, Mr. Corey?
I don't know what she's referencing.
I just believe that there should be an RFP, a request proposal for, um, a, a, a search firm. I think just picking one firm and not giving the board any other options is not serving.
So the board certainly has the right, um, to decline and direct me to reinitiate. I would receive that direction. I, I still recommend this firm. I believe this is our, a very good quality option for us, but the board has something to consider now.
Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. The motion is second. Is there any further discussion on the side of? Certainly the recommendation for Leadership Associates is within the purview of the superintendent, who is the CEO of the district. And it is also within the purview of the board to approve it or not approve it. Any other comments?
I, I guess I would just reiterate that, uh, that, that the candidate that we're looking for, the criteria that we have presented to the firm that we're going to be voting on, that they understand. Uh, I hear what Dr. Baiki is saying, that, uh, that this, which is sort of a dichotomy because it's like they're supposedly the best, but I hear what you're saying is that maybe the second best is better. We don't know that. And we really don't have the luxury of time when we're trying to get a stellar candidate. So I'm trying to realize that we need to go with our superintendent, who I feel has looked for who is the best firm to represent us. But I, I hear what you're saying.
And there will be another, a number of other stakeholders involved in this. So we'll get a sort of a, a cross section of, of, of people that will be able to, to interview and, and to consider and to find the best candidate for us.
Eileen, I just want to make a comment that, um, in reference to what Dr. Baiki said about 80%.
Okay.
In the search firm, et cetera. Um, they're a very large firm and throughout the state. I've worked with them on several occasions. Um, they have a great staff. Um, and they're probably one of the leading, uh, search firms in the state. And I can give you a list of the ones I'd stay away from. But anyway, that's, that's my two cents. I, I, I think that they will do an admirable job for us.
And just for the record, I did have contact with the county in regards to search firms that are typically used. That was one of my sources of research for this. And they gave me a list of firms to stay from as well. So this is not just an isolation. I picked the firm. I think this is the way we should go. There was research involved.
Okay. We have a motion in second and a part for no other discussion. Roll call, please.
Dr. Baiki.
Nay.
Mrs. Clevenger.
Aye.
Mrs. Bertness.
Aye.
Mrs. Babcock.
Aye.
Mrs. Preston.
Aye.
Motion carries for one. Okay. Item four, administration and ag auto buildings HVAC improvement bid award.
We have gone through the, um, process to select a lowest bidder. Um, we were fortunate that J.R. Bartow, um, was, um, in this process and they have, um, been selected as a lowest bidder for your approval. This is the final scope of Measure K work, uh, which is an exciting place to be actually. And the work would commence summer of 2020. So we just need your approval to move ahead.
Okay. Do we have a, do we have a motion to approve?
Aye, so moved.
Okay. Mrs. Bertness, and do we have a second?
I would second.
Mrs. Babcock, motion seconded in discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I've spoken to, uh, Mr. Hill, and, um, you would think that he would be strongly in favor of this HVAC renovation of, of the auto shop. Um, he is.
I'm sorry. Excuse, I just don't mean to interrupt you. Mr. Hill is what you said?
Yes.
Oh, Ron Hill. Okay. Thank you.
And he's in favor of it, but not strongly in favor of it. And, and he wanted to be here tonight. He had another engagement. And so I, with his blessings, said that I would be glad to relay his concerns. Um, with his retirement, um, there's a great degree of uncertainty within the auto shop and the students. Um, there's fear that, uh, the current plan, which basically has some, some temps or part-time, uh, professors teaching the auto shop is not going to lead to the stability that's needed for a healthy future of that program. The auto shop in, um, San Marcos has just been closed. Uh, the auto shop at, um, Santa Maria, um, has just, uh, been reopened. Uh, but the point is, is San Inez Valley High School has the auto shop. As what I have said before, is, is the crown jewel in their CTE crown. Um, I'm strongly supportive of this program. And his, Mr. Hill's statement to me was, um, there's an excellent, uh, man, uh, who ran the San Marcos program, who has his endorsement to, uh, be the top candidate, to be Mr. Hill's replacement. And he said, he meaning Mr. Hill, uh, said that he has no idea, uh, what type of, uh, impact that would have on the salary. But he and the students would be more than happy to forego any HVAC renovation if it meant bringing in something other than, than temps and part-time people to pitch hit, uh, teaching the auto shop, to bring somebody that's of high caliber, somebody who's potentially willing to move to the valley and give it years of devotion like he has. Uh, I thought that was pretty magnanimous of him to make that statement. He said that the students, unlike tonight, that his students are, are rather intimidated about speaking before the board because I suggest that that's what would be good is for any number of them to show up this evening. Um, so I don't know, um, Scott, if, and Ms. Preston, if you would like to reconsider voting on this so that, uh, Mr. Hill's comments can be further investigated. But, um, if it's not an either-or proposition as Mr. Hill fears, if the HVAC renovations can be done, if no additional funds are needed to find, uh, a competent, uh, highly motivated replacement for him, then I'm all for it.
So a fiscal point of clarification, major K funds cannot be spent on staff.
And this is major K money?
That's correct. This is the last in the major K scope of work. Yes. So completely separate funding.
All right. Thank you for clarifying that because, uh, the impression I got with my conversation was that it was not major K money. So.
And as far as plans for the auto shop, nothing has been finalized. Like, we have multiple options, including full-time, including, there's, but nothing's been decided at this point in time.
Are you aware of this individual coming out of San Marcos?
Not San Marcos.
I know him very well.
I don't even remember the name. Could you, for the record, say it?
I know him very well and I see his face and I, and I blink on his name, but I'm honest with you, he's fantastic.
And according to Mr. Hill, his release was, was a mistake. Um, that, I don't know what the details are, but he says it's a golden opportunity and the district needs to pursue him.
Okay. I want to get back on, on the topic with this agenda item. Thank you, John. Um, does anybody else have any other comments on that? I take it this time? Roll call, please.
Dr. Baiki.
Aye.
Mrs. Clevenger.
Aye.
Mrs. Bertness.
Aye.
Mrs. Babcock.
Aye.
Mrs. Preston.
Aye. Motion carries five zero.
Item number I five, consideration and action on resolution 2019, 2020 dash 12 to reduce certain certificated services and implementation of layoff procedures. Mr. Corey?
Sure. Again, as a result of the board's action at the last meeting, we cannot renew Mr. Swanett's contract. This sets off a personnel process where a, an administrator is entitled to three years of seniority in the district in the areas in which he or she is credentialed to teach. Um, Mr. Swanett possesses a single subject English credential. Um, and while we have a fully-staffed English department, his name is now a part of that list. So technically we have an additional English teacher. This resolution initiates the process now to go through a very specific personnel process, um, based on seniority. We'll need to recalibrate our seniority list, um, and have, have those conversations about what the, what the implications are now that he is in that list, that mix now. And what are the other, um, things that may be associated with this. So this initiates, um, an ed code process, um, for integrating him into the mix of staffing at this point. And just for the record, it does not reduce English teaching staff. It does not reduce. We are adding an extra. Since Mr. Swanett is credentialed in the area of English, there will, is a net zero loss for the English department for the 2021 school year.
Hey, do I have a motion to approve?
I'd say no.
Mrs. Bertness, do I have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Clevenger, motion in second on the floor. Eileen, discussion? Roll call, please, Mr. Westphal.
Dr. Baiki.
Aye.
Mrs. Clevenger.
Aye.
Mrs. Bertness.
Aye.
Mrs. Preston.
Aye.
Mrs. Babcock.
And Mrs. Babcock. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. We now have a lot of, a lot of work to do. We'll get rolling.
Okay. Item six, consideration and action on resolution 2019, 20 dash 13 to release temporary certificated employees. Mr. Corey?
We have two employees that have been working on a temporary contract just for the 1920 school year. One of those is in the area of social studies, Mr. Malus, um, who was filling in for backfilling, um, Richard L. Martin in the social studies department. That's a temp contract that ends this year. We need to formally acknowledge, um, the end of that contract. And also in our English department for a staff member, um, who is out on military service on a board-approved leave of absence. Um, that teacher has indicated that he is returning. And so, um, that person who was on the temporary contract for the entirety of the 1920 school year, um, just needs to be formally noticed, um, that, that the board is ending that contract.
Do I have a motion to approve? I approve the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Mrs. Babcock, Mrs. Clevenger, any discussion on this side of? Roll call, please.
Dr. Baiki.
Aye.
Mrs. Clevenger.
Aye.
Mrs. Bertness.
Aye.
Mrs. Babcock.
Aye.
Mrs. Preston.
Aye. Motion carries five zero.
Item J two, public hearing and information discussion for 2019, 2020 through 2021, 2022, reasons for excess reserves. At this time, we'll open the public hearing. Go ahead.
So this is a state requirement for school districts that carry more than their state-defined reserve for economic uncertainties. As we discussed last month, our state-defined reserve level is 4%. We carry in excess of that 4% as we discussed this evening. So as a formality, we are required to separately report out the fact that we are carrying above and beyond that 4%. In addition to calling out that we're carrying more, we have to call out our reasons for that. So you'll see in the forms that we call out the 3 million as part of our static minimum fund balance set by the board. And we set the rest for deficit spending. It's a formality. So we just have to report that we have it.
Any comments before we close the public hearing, board members?
I would just say, um, basically, that's the reason we do it.
100%.
Thank you. Item three is budget prioritization. We do have two speakers this evening. Yvonne Wood?
Everybody else votes your internal comment. Right. Yeah. Um, thank you for hearing what I have to say. Um, eventually, I think we're going to be, are you, you're all going to be voting on whether to have somebody for, um, um, health classes, maybe returning? Is that something that's going to be on the agenda at some point?
So, yeah, one of the list of things for consideration is a full-time health teacher.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah. So I'm here to talk about that priority and then maybe somebody who can be more involved with students with their mental health needs. So I'm talking about those two issues, um, because I think it's a real need in the school. It's something that I had available to me when I was a student in middle school and in high school, and for some reason, it's not available to my own children. So, I just want to talk about that. Healthy students do learn better. New growth studies have shown that healthy students tend to do better in school, so, and that's why we're all here. We want to make sure that our students are healthy and they have good mental health, so that they're able to get the better grades and be part of AP Psychology and things like that. So, it's a real priority for this nation as a whole and all of the states. States have begun to require mental health education in schools. So, most states require health education in all public schools, and state laws have been enacted in many states to require health teachers to include lessons on tobacco, drugs and alcohol, cancer detection, and safe sex. And these are issues that not only my children are dealing with, but their friends are all dealing with that. I would never have imagined that I would be dealing with the types of things that my children are now dealing with today. I have, you know, two girls who go to this high school, and we've dealt with some pretty, you know, significant scary things in the mental health area, not for my children, but mainly for their friends, well, and my children included. We have a lot of problems. The rate of adolescents experiencing major oppression surged forty percent from 2005 to 2014. Teen suicides from ages fifteen to nineteen increased a third between 2007 and 2015. Suicide rates among girls more than doubled during that same age group. Counselors are being added to schools following mass shootings, and because of drug overdoses, opioid crisis is a strong connection with mental illness. One in five children are diagnosed with mental disorders. So, it's just, it's something that can't be ignored, and I just wanted to come here again and be a spokesperson for, you know, a proponent for those two things, a counsel who can help students deal with whatever they're dealing with on mental health. And also, I think more importantly, just having a class so that kids can really get more information about what's going on today. So many kids are dying of this fentanyl poisoning, and it's happening in our own community. I would have never imagined that my daughter's boyfriend, Connor Gossiano, would have passed away from taking a half of a pill. I mean, it's heartbreaking. We'll be dealing without the rest of our lives from taking a half of a pill. That's all it takes. And I think that we're dealing with such, we're just dealing with different things today than what I had to deal with as a kid. We just didn't have that kind of trauma in our lives. Thank you.
Thank you. Lisa Melby?
Thank you, members of board, for the opportunity to speak. My name is Lisa Melby. I'm a parent of a junior at the high school, and I'm also a local educator. I'm speaking to, again, to share my concern that we need to be offering more mental health resources to our students, and I'm advocating for a licensed therapist and for the return of the ninth-grade whole class. I asked a local therapist to weigh in on what she's been seeing in her private practice. I believe her viewpoint is critical to this discussion. If students aren't receiving services at school, then they're having to receive services outside. She's unable to be at this meeting because she's meeting with clients, so she asked me to say some things on her behalf. So, this is from Joanie Nelson. My name is Joanie Nelson, and I have been in private practice in Solvang for ten years. I have four treatment rooms, and between therapists that I subtly space to and those I employ, there are ten therapists that share the space. In addition to my private practice, I'm an adjunct professor at Antioch in their Masters of Clinical Psychology Program, and the clinical supervisor for CADA's Council on Alcoholism and Nerv abuse, school-based counseling program in San Maria. My treatment area focus is high-achieving adolescents with elevated depressive and anxiety symptoms. I currently have eleven students from San Ynez High School on my caseload. As a narrative therapist, typically, I see kids throughout their high school experience. In other words, my caseload rarely fluctuates. I'm an in-network provider for Anthem, Blue Cross, and Cigna. Otherwise, my session fee is between one hundred and ten and one hundred and fifty dollars. The eleven kids I see from San Ynez High are a blend of private pay and insurance. I do not advertise. Aside note, I did learn that of the therapist in the valley, only the two matched accept Centcal and Medical, and they have a year-and-a-half waitlist. This count, back to Joanie, this calendar year, I received one hundred and forty-seven referral calls for individuals seeking therapeutic services. Ninety-three of those calls were for people under the age of eighteen. I was able to serve one of those ninety-three kids seeking services. I pulled my colleagues today, most of which indicate they see between one to three high school students weekly. All of them are part-time, except for me, and zero have openings on their caseload to take new patients now. My recommendations, one licensed therapist and three associate therapists that work under and receive supervision from a licensed therapist located on the school campus. The therapy provided is a short-term cognitive behavioral therapy, which is an evidence-based approach to treat a myriad of challenges, including depression, anxiety, adjustment disorder, and a general array of mental health challenges, and it typically lasts eight to twelve sessions. If the challenges cannot be treated in this timeframe, or it's not an appropriate diagnosis for school-based work, a clinical decision would be made to continue services or refer the student to community resources for additional treatment. The program model is what I supervise for CADA's school-based program, and it's a very good program. Joanie finishes by saying that she would be open for discussion if you needed further information about that.
Thanks, Lisa.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa.
Yes, it's kind of got my scratches. Could I email you a clean copy?
Please.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Lisa. Thank you, Lisa. And thank you for your patience, Lisa, and Yvonne. Mr. Corey, did you have anything to add? Budget prioritization at this time, we have a meeting in March twenty-sixth?
Yes.
Okay. Very good. Thank you so much. Board member comments and correspondence? Any comments?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Joan.
Three things. Number one, just as a reminder, I still wish to be involved with whatever ad hoc committee is claiming to be looking at the math textbooks. I'm just fearful that fall semester is going to be here before you know it. Second question, Mr. Corey, does the school have any tools whereby they can survey the students or the students' parents to see what interest there would be in summer school class offerings for something above or medium? In other words, for the motivated, gifted student that wants to do summer school, we have nothing at the moment.
That's correct.
And your comment, when we talked about this last month, was purely, it's a matter of finances. Well, possibly, if there's an overwhelming desire to have that, then that would prioritize our limited funds to be devoted in that direction. So, a question again, is there any way that we can survey the students or and/or the parents to see what type of interest there would be?
We could get input. We don't have a, we could work on that. There is a possibility of doing that. I would urge the board to first consider the other priorities before you. I'm not against summer school offerings for advanced courses, but I think we have some pretty substantial decisions before us about regular school-year offerings that we really should grapple with first and get a handle on before.
And I'm not suggesting that this would be for this upcoming 2020 summer, but possibly for summer 2021.
So, at the pleasure of the board.
And number three is, again, just so that we're not out of this conversation, still May board meeting, last time, last board meeting, I threw out the request that all of the board members be allowed to have caps and gowns. I don't know the processes for having a company provide those, but I'd like to have some closure on that request before we get much closer to commencement.
So, my understanding is the planning of graduation is the responsibility of the site principal, and then beyond that, what are the wishes of the board? Is this something that anybody wants to think about? We did talk about it last time, that we would think about it, and perhaps this would be the time to settle this, and whether the board can do it or not is another question, so.
I understand having faculty dressed in the academic robes. I think that's a nice touch. They're the ones who've been educating the students. I see us as more, a different role. Personally, I don't see the need, or I don't particularly have the desire to dress in my academic robes here. When I was teaching, I did, you know? When I was at the university, I did.
And what was that reason?
Pardon me?
And what was the?
What was that reason that you wanted to do it when you were a faculty?
Because I was in the classroom, and I was in an academic position, and I don't feel that, as a board member, we have an important function, but we're not academicians at this point. And I think that's, it's more for the academy. I mean, otherwise, and we have parents wearing them too, you know? We could have, I mean, I don't know where we draw the line. I always liked seeing the board, when I was faculty, seeing the board dressed in a suit and tie, and dressed appropriately there, and it shows that the community itself values education. I thought that was, that was very nice as well.
As a former student, I've never been to a commencement where the board was not in cap and gown, and I can tell you that as a youngster, I looked with great admiration at all of those colorful caps and gowns, thinking someday, I wonder whether I'm ever going to be able to wear a cap and gown. It was a source of motivation for me to continue to work hard. The same reason that a faculty member should want to wear a cap and gown is the same reason that the five of us should want to wear a cap and gown. I don't think I've ever heard of, I realize you said this tongue-in-cheek, but I've never seen a commencement exercises where parents dressed in cap and gown. If they all wanted to as a group, then let's do it, but nobody wants to do that. I don't think that an additional five people wearing caps and gown is going to, in any way detract from the ceremony.
I make a motion that we keep the status quo for graduation, retirement.
That you need to actually vote on?
I feel like we need to put an end to it.
If you simply provide direction.
It's not an agendized item.
Okay. Okay, I'm sorry, but I do agree with you, Dr. Becky. We need to put an end to it, so let's figure out a way to do it. I have no desire to wear a cap and gown and all of my hoods to graduation. I don't think it's appropriate for the board to do that. I appreciate Tori's comments about when you're in the classroom with students, you're with them daily, that's perfect, and, but I don't feel that it's a role that the board should take on at this point. So, I'm done.
And I'll just add that I think it's an honor to be at graduation, to participate in graduation, and I am happy to see our students and our faculty in cap and gown, and I don't really think it's necessary.
Any other? Pardon me, I'm locked down here. Hold on, please. Any other board member comments? Okay. Okay. The next meeting of the San Ynez Valley Union High School District Board of Education is a special meeting. It is on March twenty-sixth, 2020. It is at 5:30, which is a, it is a Thursday. And then the following meeting will be the April twenty-first meeting, same time, which will be a regular scheduled meeting of the board. At this time, the board will go into closed session. Anticipated litigation pursuant to paragraphs D two and E one of Government Code, Section 54956.9.